All right, we're going to go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 23rd to order. It is 5:30. With that, Clerk Bullock, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Seven members present. You have a quorum of the committee.
All right, and for the meeting minutes of May 16th, 2022, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes as written for May 16th.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to public comment on agenda items. Tonight, we do have a resolution that deals with polling place changes. We have three items that we will be discussing and placing on file, and we have, oh, a closed session. So with that, if there is anyone that would like to make public comment, we will give you three minutes. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. We simply ask that you state your first and last name for the record. So if you're interested, come on down. And seeing none, that takes us to action item five. This is a resolution pertaining to polling place changes, the establishment of voting locations for all precincts. If we could have Clerk Swope join us down in the well. We appreciate you being here. Yes, Vice President Wood.
Thank you. Before we get started on this, a couple of housekeeping measures. One, I don't believe we received all the answers to the questions that we asked during the budget process, so I want to make sure that we get those. Also, because we are without our internal auditor, if we could have the Finance Director take the questions that we've asked and the answers that we've given have been given to them and put them in one document. We've gotten pieces piecemealed here and there, but if we could get one complete document with the questions and the answers, and if we could have that for our next council meeting, I would appreciate it.
We're clear on the ask? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, absolutely, not a problem. All right, Clerk Swope. So our understanding is that we have a resolution before us tonight to approve voting location changes. Our understanding is that this is to reflect changes in precincts that were, I should say, approved by the Election Commission. So, and I think one of the things we're interested in is maybe methodology, how you guys actually decided on where the locations would be. And so with that being said, we'll turn the floor over to you.
Certainly, and I'd like to introduce Robyn Stites, the election supervisor here for the City of Lansing, who oversees most of the day-to-day of election administration. So, you know, as you know, we went through a process of determining the precinct boundaries based on the ward boundaries that had been established, as well as the county commissioner districts, the State House and State Senate districts. So, you know, we try and create as few splits as possible so that people that go to one location get one ballot, and just simplifies the process for both the voters and our election workers. So that part has been done. And then we reviewed, we had to review the polling locations, which is the role or the city council's authority to determine what those polling locations are. We kept many of the previous polling locations that voters were voting in, or the bulk of the voters from a precinct were voting in. We did make several changes. We eliminated a number of polling places, and there were several reasons for that. Some of them had to do with buildings that the school district would prefer us not to use as polling places in case there are school on Election Day. Some of the elementary schools, the gymnasium is small and is the only place that they have for children to eat their lunch. And some of the buildings in particular, there is no separate entrance to the gymnasium, and they prefer that the members of the public, the voting public, not be going through the hallways of the school. So while we couldn't fully eliminate all of those situations, we did aim to reduce those types of situations. We also had one church that just determined that they no longer wished to be a polling place. And then another church, as we were delivering equipment for the May election, informed us that they were closing at the end of May. So that kind of eliminated them as an option. That was kind of a last-minute change we had to throw up. In our discussions with the school districts, they did say that they would love us to be using their buildings that are not open for instruction. So we took a tour of the Johnson Field House, the Dr. Halek Professional Center, which is the former Wainwright, and used to be a polling place but was problematic because of interaction with the kids there. So we are proposing moving back to there for precincts. Their administration building downtown, we've never had, it's probably will be the best downtown polling place we've had in my time as clerk, serving sort of the bulk of people who live downtown, and the ADA accessibility and parking. So, you know, we looked for places within the precinct or nearby so that the voters are not traveling very far. And that's how we ended up with the Neighborhood Empowerment Center. So, you know, one place that I think deserves to be highlighted. We are restricted by state law in terms of what can be a polling place. Governmental buildings, which includes schools, churches, and buildings owned by nonprofits are eligible. And then apartment complexes, if there are 150 or more residents in them, can be used. But we've found in the past that those are pretty difficult locations to use because then you have people coming in that don't necessarily live in that apartment complex, and it's not always feeling, it feels very welcoming for the people who live there, and for the people who don't live there, they feel a bit out of place. So we've come up with this list, and glad to answer any questions. Did I miss anything, Robyn?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any questions, comments? We'll go Vice President Wood, Councilman Jackson, and then Councilwoman Spitzley.
Chris, my first question would be Fourth Ward, Precinct 32, at the Dr. Eva Evans Welcome Center. You do realize that that, this year, there is the CSO construction that's going on there. So I know they have an alternative route that's coming in off of Boston, but were you aware that...
I was not aware of the CSO project. I will...
I go there every day, so I am fairly aware.
Okay. Yeah, I was not aware of that. Well, and what we've done with things like that where the building is still open but the routes may be changed, we have a large, we actually have a relatively large number of email addresses for voters, so we can do notifications that way as well as postcards.
Because the intersection of Gordon and Patengale is closed. Well, right now, you can drive through it, but they're going to start digging up the sewer shortly, and so then that will be like that for the rest. I mean, it'll definitely be there for the primary.
And what we found is a lot of times, the people in that precinct know more than we do about how to get there. So, because they, especially this one, you know, it is within the boundaries of the precinct. So I'm sure all of those folks will be painfully aware.
Okay.
But we'll do our part to communicate with them.
Then my question, and whether you know the answer, I thought the school district was selling the administration building.
They did not indicate any plans to do that.
No, they're not now.
Yeah. To the, yeah, the building to the south of it, I believe, they're looking at.
I was just...
Yes, not...
Checking. I mean, you sounded really enthusiastic to be told it.
They named it after Shirley Rogers, and they can't sell it now.
I agree with you, but, you know. Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the Fourth Ward, and I forgot. I'm assuming that the precincts must have changed their numbers significantly, especially 35, 36, 37.
Yeah, all the numbering changed throughout the city. We went from 45 precincts citywide to 40, so there are 10 precincts per ward. And part of that reduction is the fact that we're seeing between two-thirds and three-quarters of the people who participate in any election now are voting by absentee ballot.
So I assume that 435 is not downtown, but is more west side?
Correct. That is the west side neighborhood.
Okay. I guess, and that's good, then. Thank you.
Yeah, 36 is the downtown, so that would be the one voting at the administration building.
Thank you.
And this isn't to say that you're confused at all. Just, it made me think, just so folks understand, and I think Clerk Swope was clear that the Election Commission is actually empowered through state statute to actually change, alter, et cetera, the precincts, to make, as an example, voting more accessible. And what we're doing tonight is taking a look at the actual voting locations. Councilwoman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you remind us of how you're letting the public know about these changes?
Well, we will be mailing a new voter ID card to every registered voter, as well as an email notification. Closed locations, we will put signs up for a time. And, yes, signs, emails. We frequently do advertisements in neighborhood newsletters. Those are a little bit more difficult because, you know, it may be targeted to a neighborhood, but sometimes that involves multiple precincts. So kind of the message will be, you know, check before you drive to your polling place.
Sure. So, and I appreciate the new voting cards. And for the precincts that will be closed, you'll do the signage, but someone will also be getting a new voter registration card with their new precinct if it's going to be on there, and location or whatever on the card, right?
Right. We are required to send a voter identification, or we're trying to start calling it a voter information card because it's not really identification, doesn't...
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
So we're trying to send, we will be sending a new voter information card to all registered voters because not only their polling place and precinct, but we also have to notify them of their congressional and state senate and state house and county commission district and ward, and all of those have changed. I mean, everything has changed for every, there is at least something that has changed for every voter in the City of Lansing, whether it's just a district, congressional district, or something else, you know, even just the number. Even if it's the same member of Congress who may or may not win the election and represent you, it's a different district.
And when do you anticipate this information going out?
We're looking at probably in the next two weeks or so.
Okay.
We're trying, we're coordinating it. We're about to be sending out absentee ballot applications, and we're trying to coordinate it with that mailing so they kind of get all the information at once.
All right, do we have other questions, comments? Just a quick question. So in terms of simple geography and access to the ballot, cursory look at this, I was a little concerned. Looks like in Ward 1, we have seven locations, Ward 2, eight locations, Ward 4, we have 10 different locations, and in Ward 3, we have five. And then we have four different precincts voting at, I believe, the South Side Community Co., not Side, it rolls right off my tongue, South Side.
Oh, Friedish Smith.
Friedish Smith, South Side Community Center, yeah. And so I'm wondering what that does in terms of, and I get it that they have the capacity in terms of size, the parking lot certainly will suffice us, I think, and then it's on a bus line, but I'm a little concerned about access in southwest Lansing. So can you talk a little bit about why so few locations?
I guess one thing to note is that the Third Ward is the most densely populated. So in terms of geographic size, the Third Ward is the smallest. So while there are fewer locations, I think you're probably looking at relatively equal distances. One of the things I wanted to do, I couldn't do, which was to have all of the Eaton County Third Ward residents vote at Wood Creek. There's a state law that has the maximum number of voters in a precinct, and the two precincts are just barely over. I lobbied for a change to that because of the number of people that are voting absentee. And the building, just the physical infrastructure, when you, once you put two teams of workers and two sets of equipment, just physically doesn't hold it. So, you know, those are some of the things we were trying to do, but we did, you know, maintain the Tabernacle of David. We are adding the Wainwright or the Dr. Halek site.
Okay. And I would, sorry, I would assume there's going to be measures put in place to determine, or I should say almost a study post, whether or not the locations worked, whether they were accessible, whether, okay.
Yeah, we always do that. And, you know, the precinct boundaries were a little bit more restricted on when we can amend them. We have to do that pretty far out from a November general election, but the polling locations, as you've seen over the course of a decade, we move or temporarily modify or do various things with those.
Okay, I appreciate it. Vice President Wood?
We did spend some money or receive some grant money to make improvements to polling places. Were any of those things portable that we did, or were they permanent to the location?
We, boy, that's been a number of years ago, and most of them, I think they were all to school facilities. We did buy some equipment that is portable, and we do still deploy that. But fewer and fewer of our locations require that because as the school district and other buildings make other improvements, they're already ADA accessible. And as we add, you know, every time we add a location, we, before we even say, propose it to you, we make sure that they're ADA accessible.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, other questions, comments? Seeing none. Vice President Wood?
At this time, I would move the resolution for the polling places be placed on our agenda for passage.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We appreciate you being here. Before we move on, real quickly to the administration, we, the discussion of voting locations and obviously all of that is in the wake of the census and reapportionment, et cetera. Late last year, if you recall, the administration had signaled that they might be challenging the census results. In January, I actually asked Mark Yu on the record whether or not that was going to happen. I think at that time, you had said the administration was actually positioning themselves to challenge. Significant, obviously, at stake, you know, we're talking about federal dollars, both in revenue sharing and grant dollars, but also state revenue sharing. My understanding is we were able to officially begin some challenge as afforded by federal law in January of this year. So I'm curious, do we have any update in terms of, are we challenging? Have we put something official forth? Okay. Can, yeah, can you guys get us information and maybe report out at the next meeting? Okay, thanks so much. That being said, we are at, let's see, agenda item C. This is the General Fund Status Report. I do believe we have, yes, we do, our Deputy Finance Director as well as our Budget Director, Mr. Jake Brower. We appreciate you being here with us, Jake. How's it going?
Going well. I appreciate being here as well.
All right. I'm going to turn the floor over for you, or, I'm sorry, over to you.
Excellent. So I'll start with the General Fund Status Report. Our fiscal year ongoing runs from July 1st, 2021, through June 30th of 2022, a date which is rapidly approaching us. For FY '22, the city budgeted $133.1 million in total revenues, including transfers, and $151.3 million in total expenditures for the general fund. At the time, the city was projected to receive just under $25 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds for the year and plan to use those funds to continue government services and prevent drastic reduction in expenditures during the course of the fiscal year, which we determined would drastically impact public welfare and the city's workforce. COVID-19 exposed the city to a number of serious challenges. We prepared very conservatively to address those challenges, and with the confidence of receiving federal dollars, we were able to determine that we could sustain a year under normal operations using a significant amount of those dollars. Overall, as we finished the review of our 2021 expenditures from the year before, we determined that we were able to use a number of one-time revenues, expenditure reductions, and other tricks in our bucket in order to restore the city's fund balance to a level that could, rather than use a significant amount of federal dollars upfront in the current fiscal year, we now project that we'll be able to use our reserves, draw those down, and use federal funds in a more sustainable pattern going forward. Overall, as you're looking at the expenditure reports, skipping forward a few pages in your report, you'll see that we include the FY '22 adopted budget, the FY '22 projected budget, which is a combination of the budget amendment that the city council has passed, along with the proposed additional elements that are currently tabled for further consideration down the road. Lastly, there's a column for the year-to-date actual expenditures as of March 31, along with percent year-to-date and previous year averages or an expenditure target, depending on the report you're looking at. Going over by different revenue summaries on page 13 of your packet, poverty taxes are the vast majority of the City of Lansing's budget, remain fairly stable throughout the course of the fiscal year. Income taxes are the next largest bucket, above the conservative estimates of the beginning of the year adopted budget, as you can see with the projection. Continue.
Yeah, finish your thought, and then I'll recognize it. Thanks so much.
Yep. Income taxes are the next biggest bucket, which are in line with our projected estimate for year-end as of March 30. We remain cautious as the Federal Reserve is determining how to respond to current conditions of inflation, economic activity, conflict, and other factors that are outside of our control.
All right, Councilwoman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the city income tax, I know, and maybe I apologize, Jake, if you aren't the proper person to ask, but I know that there was some discussion about an effort to get back taxes. Do you know where that is and how successful that's been?
I know from broad details that the effort has been fairly successful. I'm unable to quantify that alone, although if you get the current Finance Director here when she's back from a conference, she could tell you more about all those exciting details.
Okay, you may proceed. Thank you.
Yep. Return on equity is received in December and June. The current contract includes a guarantee, $25 million payment to the city, and 3% of wholesale revenue in excess of $409 million and some change. Overall, the Board of Water and Light is considering an amendment to this contract to extend it an additional two years. The contract will be slightly adjusted. Rather than using this formula from retail and wholesale sales of chilled water, electric, steam, heat, and water utilities, the proposal is to be 6.0% of operating revenues, less interutility sales, which is a fancy term for internal service fund charges that the Board of Water and Light charges itself. These would be numbers that would be reflected in their annual financial statements, and so we'd be able to piece those back together. But you'll see more about that deal in the days to come. Moving on to state revenues, these are slightly above our projections with October, December, February revenue sharing payments received by the city. The Michigan Department of Treasury estimated a $585,000 negative adjustment to revenue sharing resulting from updated census results. However, with the appropriation from the state legislature, we were held harmless from that amount, and so we are well on track for our state revenues. We've also received a larger payment of the recreational marijuana revenues, which has been a great bonus for the City of Lansing to receive, and we've updated our projections accordingly. The remainder sources of revenue, charges for services, fines of forfeitures, licenses, permits, amount to 10% of the city's general fund revenues. Looking at expenditures year-to-date, departments are being fairly responsible. The only department that is slightly ahead of the year-to-date target is economic development and planning by a very small amount. Overall, the administration departments are remaining fairly cautious when it comes to making expenditures and being very responsible with the city dollars. As you look into the next pages, you'll see the numeric summary of the budget report by revenues detail, departmental summary by budget appropriation, and a governmental summary which separates out some specific details such as retirement fixed benefits, IT expenses, fleet, et cetera.
All right. Anything else?
No, I'm available for any questions.
All right, do we have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move to place the general fund summary on file.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to, so you can just stay in place, that takes us to our Employment Vacancy Factor Report for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 third quarter.
Yep. In front of you, you'll see the vacancy factor report as of March 31st, 2022. Overall, the general message of this report is that we are on track in terms of meeting our projected vacancy factor. You'll see on page one is the general fund vacancies totaling 56.8. Second page, 54.2 vacancies, the fractional amounts being full-time equivalencies. In particular, there's a employee and labor relations administrator, which is split between the general fund and other funds. On the final page was an attempt that we made to address a concern made in the previous presentation of this report, where we attempted to put a numeric value to the effect of overtime and contractual services towards mitigating the effects of vacancies within the city. Overall, we tried in several different methods of quantifying this effect. However, we weren't really satisfied with any of those methods. I would consider this last page a draft concept, but not one that we're satisfied with at this time.
All right, Councilwoman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. What does it mean, what does overfill mean?
That was a measure where, by my reports, there were more firefighters hired than we had available positions. One thing that wasn't communicated to me as I was building this report was that there were some positions within the fire department, six captain positions and six engineering positions, which had been converted from those positions into being firefighters. And so that is an adjustment that will be corrected in the future report.
Okay, it looks like you also have the fire chief still on here as well.
Yep, this would be as of March 31st.
Okay. So the overfill, so let me get this straight. It's not that we've hired too many, it's just kind of a clerical thing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and...
Absolutely. Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. I'm seeing some discrepancies between the 1231, 2021 report and this March 31st, 2022 report. As an example, under the council internal auditor in the December report, you had a notation contract, which was exactly what it was. And in this one, you don't. Under the Assistant EDC and P Planning, the Assistant Planning Manager, that you also had as a contract position, and this one you don't. You go down to the City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney, you had a reclass for that one, and this one you don't. I mean, I could go through all of these. Is there a reason why the change, and if you could explain it to me?
Unfortunately, there's, I don't really have a satisfactory answer to that question other than the fact that we took a renewed review of all of the positions for which ones were contracted and didn't have the time to catch those errors in our review. So that's on us, and I apologize for that.
Okay, if you could have, take a look at this, and from, again, from the December report to this one, and then make sure that we have the corrections, because again... this one, and then make sure that we have the corrections, because again, such as the internal auditor's position, yes, now it is vacant, but it was not vacant when you did the report.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move at this time to place the vacancy report on file.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate you being here. The next item, we have an executive order 2022-02, this deals with public art policy adoption and rescinding the Mayor's Arts and Culture Commission. Remember, back in 2018, the mayor actually put forth an executive order that created a Mayor's Arts and Cultures Commission. The following year, in 2019, he put forth an executive order where we, or I should say, where he adopted the policies toward public art. Last year, some point in the fall, we actually approved amendments to Chapter 266, where we created an ordinance board for arts and culture. And I think, you know, pretty much in every document that we took a look at, there was this acknowledgement of the importance of public art as, you know, really fostering culture, placemaking, kind of a driver of economic development and such. And so it's been recognized, my understanding, by the administration, that to have the Mayor's Arts and Culture Commission, as well as a standing Arts and Culture Commission, would be redundant, number one. And then, number two, so we're going to rescind the executive order that actually created that cultures, or Arts and Culture Commission. And then what we're also doing is rescinding the executive order with regards to the public art policy, because what we're doing now is actually, I should say, he is through executive order adopting public art, new public art policy. So with that being said, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Just for clarification for new council members, when a mayor does an executive order, we have so many days to respond to that executive order. If not, then it goes into place. So what we're doing now is moving to place it on file and not make any changes to the executive order. So with that, I would move to place on file.
All right. There's a motion to place on file for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to Item F, closed session. Vice President Wood.
At this point, I would move pursuant to MCL 15-2681H, that I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with a written legal opinion from the city attorney, which is in a written exemption under the disclosure pursuant to freedom of information, and that city clerk Swob be allowed to come into the meeting as well.
All right. There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, Clerk Bullock, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, with no other business before the body-
You only have three people.
When do we have?
We need a quarter.
Oh, we need four, you're right.
Yes.
One more.
We need one more person in here.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Spitzley. We appreciate it.
We need a four.
I thought we had a four.
You know what? Period.
All right, now we have four. So with no other business before the body, we are adjourned at 6:37. Something like that.